Before I get started, I will go ahead and read a note. In order to avoid unnecessary fines from Oregon OSHA for violating the governor's mask mandate, I'd like to note that there are signs requesting people to wear masks at the entrance of the building. Masks are available and used in the back of the room. And that is an audible reminder of this mandate outlined in OSHA Workplace Advisory Manual 8.13.21. At this time, you would go ahead and do the Microsoft notice.
If you are new to using Microsoft Teams, notice the icons in the upper right-hand corner of your screen. The second one from the left is a chat bubble icon indicated with a yellow arrow. If you wish to be recognized by the mayor to speak, please choose the bubble icon to enter the meeting chat. It will appear on the right-hand side of your screen. First, enter your name, address, and a phone number in the chat, followed by the topic you wish to discuss. If you wish to speak at any point during the meeting, you can choose the hand icon, also located in the upper right-hand corner, indicated with the green arrow. It's the equivalent of raising your hand. Then the mayor, acting chairperson, or moderator will ask you to speak at the appropriate time. We will give everyone a few moments now to enter their name, address, phone number, and topic they'd like to address with the council in the meeting chat. We will ask, in the interest of time, that people not repeat a previous speaker. Instead, state you agree with their point or disagree with their point. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes. Any extension of that time is at the sole discretion of the mayor or meeting chairperson per the council rules. The moderator will note those joining by phone for the mayor or chairperson. The fact the meeting is online does not excuse poor behavior. The mayor retains the right to have people removed from the meeting as stated in the council rules.
Thank you. At this time, Julie, roll call, please.
Mayor Mahler.
Present.
Counselor Gerson.
Present.
Counselor Trask.
Here.
Counselor Gorley.
Here.
Counselor Coleman.
Present.
Counselor Sanchez. Counselor Sanchez. Counselor Richards.
Counselor Sanchez. Oh, there we go. Welcome. At the record.
Present.
The records show we have six present with one absent. Counselor Richards was stuck in Portland traffic and unable to make it this evening. That said, we'll ask for consent approval of it.
Chairman of the council and as mayor, that the... You can have virtual counselors here. One can be at home and the other five are here.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So moved.
Motion second by roll call, please.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counselor Gerson.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Okay, let the record show we have six eyes, one absent, approval of the absence. Consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
A motion and second in any discussion. Not roll call, please.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counselor Gerson.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Let the record show we have six eyes with no nays with one absent, approval of consent agenda. Recognition of visitors and hearing petitions. We have someone here from Samaritan this evening?
We do. I believe Doug Boyson, CEO, Marty Cahill, Lebanon CEO, Milt Moran, board president, and Brandy and Christie from the foundation are also here. They brought a contingent for us this evening. So they'd like to make a presentation. We can turn it over to them. I would like to remind the council that vital that we get up with the masks and really get into our microphones to speak to make sure everybody can hear us too, please. So if you guys want to come on up. So I don't know who's lucky enough to get do all the talking. You've got a little clicker in front of you, and if you point it at that television on the wall in the middle, that can help you go forward and back just by using the two arrows. Right would move it forward and left would move it back. Yep.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you for coming. Good to see you guys again. Just for the record, I do need to have somebody give a name and address for our record.
Marty Cahill, 525 Lechanyan Highway, Lebanon, Oregon, 973-55. Sorry. Can I do that again for you?
You got that?
No, we got it.
We got it.
Thank you.
Ray, are you able to put the presentation up?
Yeah.
So it just... Just make sure everything's working here.
So Marty, or excuse me, when you have the green ring, it means you're good to go?
Okay. So now I'm good.
Now you're good.
Thank you for the lesson on that. Good evening, everyone. Hi, as Ray said, I'm Doug Boyson. I'm the CEO of Samaritan. It's a real honor and pleasure to be here tonight. We're here to update everyone on the new clinic project with the primary care clinic and urgent care clinic that we're going to be putting in here over on the Wiley Creek campus. I'm also going to talk a little bit about what's going on on the system level as well. And Brandy's going to be talking a little bit about the fundraising efforts that we're doing. And Milt's going to talk a little bit about from a community perspective and an SHS board perspective about the project. So kind of about the system a little bit. And I will say, kind of before I dive into this, I'll just say this right off the top, that we continue to be really excited about the project here. We're doing all the planning and getting ready to move that forward. Despite all the craziness of the pandemic, we're absolutely committed to that project. So it's all good news, I think, that we're sharing tonight. But a little bit about the system. We are Samaritan Health Services. We cover a three-county service area, Benton, Lincoln, and Lynn Counties. We are a nonprofit, mission-driven organization. Our mission is building healthier communities together. Obviously, the project that we're talking about tonight, I think, fits absolutely square into that. What I really, what we're really excited about is this has truly been a collaboration amongst the community, which I think is going to bring a lot of value to the community and to the patients. We have five hospitals around our three-county area. You can see the list there. We also have eighty clinics around our three-county area. So we both have the inpatient hospitals and obviously the clinics. And we're going to be building a new one here in Sweet Home. We have now up around five hundred employed clinicians. That's physicians and APCs that work within our system. Model has changed a lot over the years, and we're finding as physicians now graduate from medical school, they're more apt to want to work for a system like we have. So we're having lots of good success with recruiting new clinicians into the system right now. We, as well as our clinics and hospitals, we also have our own health insurance company. We provide health insurance. We provide a Medicare Advantage plan, Medicaid plan for a three-county area. And we also sell commercial insurance to employers as well. We go. So Samaritan is really kind of an organic growth of a lot of independent hospitals. That's happened, really. It started in the 1990s. The first merger that took place was the Lebanon Hospital merged with the Good Sam Hospital in Corvallis. And that was start of Samaritan as we know it. It's continued on over that time where Albany then joined. And then we had the Newport Hospital join, and then the hospital in Lincoln City joined as well. And obviously, during that time, we've grown our clinics. We've grown our health plan operations. In the state of Oregon, there's a thing called CCOs, which really helps to manage the Medicaid members in the state. And so we own and operate that for our three-county service area. We also do a lot of training within our system. I'll specifically talk about medical students a little bit. You all know we have, we partner with Comp Northwest in Lebanon. Many of their students do clinical rotations through our hospitals and in our clinics. And then on top of that, we have a residency program where we may have upwards of one hundred and eleven residents that are working within our system. So students go to Comp Northwest, they graduate from that, they do their residency. And then if it's a good fit for our service area in Samaritan, we keep those residents in as employees after that. We're really dedicated to grow the local economy. When you have the mission of building healthier communities together, of course, healthcare is the primary thing that we're looking at with that. But also, we look at as a company that's often one of the bigger companies in our service area, regardless of where we're at. It's really important that we have robust growth in our jobs and that our jobs are the type of jobs where people make good wages and they have good benefits. And in our mind, and that helps, they're out doing their part in their communities, buying homes and helping build the economic health of that community. We really strive to be an open system that treats everyone. You know, whether you have insurance or you don't have insurance or you're Medicaid or Medicare, no matter what your background, we try to be inclusive to everyone. So Marty will, I'll finish this slide, and then Marty will get into the specifics of the project here. But just some of the things that we have going on from a system perspective. And I, you know, got to mention the pandemic because that's been a large thing that we focused on for the last eighteen months. We had a lot of things teed up in 2019 that we were going to focus on in 2020. And of course, all those good plans kind of went to the side for really about the last eighteen months because the pandemic has been kind of a grueling marathon, and it's required different things from us as an organization every step of the way. And we've continued to try adapt. We've seen one of our largest patient surges just over the last four to six weeks. We kind of thought we were kind of seeing everything go down. It does appear things are starting to head down a little bit on this. But nonetheless, we have had to focus immensely as an organization to get through that. Another thing that we're really focused on right now is a concept called being a high-reliability organization. This is a type of structure and a way of doing things that a lot of airline industries and the nuclear power industry has used for safety purposes. Some healthcare organizations are now starting to use these HRO principles. And what they're showing is that you can be a much safer organization to patients and actually to the employees within the system if you adopt these principles. So we've been, we've been starting that journey. We strive to be the safest organization in the country is what we're trying to do. It's going to, we're a journey to get there, but good stuff is happening there. We've also been working on forming what we're calling our Samaritan Medical Group. In the past, we've had about eighty clinics within Samaritan that have all been kind of discreet, kind of their own silo, for lack of better words. And what we're trying to do is bring all the clinics together, not physically, but just so that they're working together as a team to come up with common clinical protocols across the system. What we've found is if those doctors and clinicians can agree on best practices across the whole service area, that we just provide better care to patients. We need to provide better access for primary care. And really, that's across our entire three-county area. Sweet Home is one of the projects that we have teed up, the new clinic here that's going to help on that. Another clinic that we have going right now, or another project, is we're working with Oregon State University. They are building a new building next to the football stadium that's going to house their student health services. We're going to rent probably about ten thousand square feet in that building. We're going to partner with them in the student health services. But we're also going to have a primary care clinic, potentially an urgent care clinic, right there on campus to be available for the employees and the faculty at Oregon State. And it's going to be open to the public as well. During the pandemic, I think, like most businesses, it's been a challenge to keep employees. It's been a challenge to recruit new employees. We're going to have to really focus on that more going into the future, and we're coming up with plans around that. And then just one more project I'll mention. We've been working the last six months on expanding what we call the Pistaiga House in Corvallis. And that's a house that's right next to the Good Sam Hospital. And it's a place where it's extremely affordable that when patients are coming from outside of Corvallis, but they're going to be at Good Sam for multiple days and their family members, that they can stay right there at the Pistaiga House on campus. So it's been a really good thing for families. We've had twelve rooms historically. We're expanding that to twenty-four and hope to have that done in January. Now with that, I'll pass it over to Marty, and he's going to talk probably about what you really want to hear about tonight. So go ahead, Marty.
Good evening, everyone, and thanks for having us. Good to see everyone again. Just an update on the project in Sweet Home. A couple of years ago, the council and the healthcare council that exists in Sweet Home came up with long-term goals and priorities. And as you look at these priorities, long-term care, memory care, physical therapy, behavioral health, and urgent care. The project that we've been able to put together over the last year, and I think we're going to be closing on by the end of the week for Wiley Creek, is to be able to meet all of these needs that the council has identified as priorities. The one thing that we recognize, though, is that those are, they're not surprising what you want. I think it's what most communities want. If you went and asked them, the hard part is being able to deliver on all of those because there's a vast, vast needs there that are difficult for us to meet, and one of them being the assisted living, long-term care, memory care. That was just not an area that we had the expertise in. We partnered with the city for years. It's been great partners. Partnered with the community, which have been great partners. And we've now found a partner in taking over Wiley Creek Mosaic. Mosaic is going to be becoming the owner of Wiley Creek probably end of this week. We hope to finish that deal and have it done. So they'll move into that area. So our goal now is to take care of the bottom three, which are the physical therapy, behavioral health, and urgent care. There we go. Yeah, perfect. So when we start looking at this now, we want to increase access and improve access. That's also a concern that we've heard across our three counties and all the service areas that we have. It's not unique here. Again, the citizens of this community want better access. Primary care is difficult. Our walk-in clinic is only open five days a week right now. So the concern around having access to care more consistently, like we have across the system, is important. The what? We're going to build a fifteen thousand square foot building at Wiley Creek on the corner. That will house primary care, so we'll have the ability to hire more primary care providers. And we'll also have an urgent care in there. And so the idea of having urgent care, there's a lot of ambulances that travel out of this community every day with folks that we believe could be treated in an urgent care environment. And our walk-in clinic right now is not set up more than eight to five or eight to six, Monday through Friday. So getting a more robust service line around urgent care is going to be very important. And so that'll be on the space on the corner right on Wiley Creek. We anticipate breaking ground a little less than a year from now, just based on all the construction and what's going on in the community. We've had a hurricane on the East Coast, hurricane down in the Gulf of Mexico. It's difficult to get things put together. So we're anticipating breaking ground on that here next year. And the why on that is because it's the right thing to do for the community. We found our partners to take care of long-term care and memory care. So it's time for us to start to move forward with the things that we do well. If we look at this schematic here, you can see Wiley Creek built out completely on that campus. You're now looking at what would be probably the next three to five-year goal. In the orange buildings, as you look up there, you see are the new buildings. And if you look at the top-left corner, that's the clinic, the fifteen thousand square foot clinic we're going to build there. The one other thing that I did, that I didn't mention is a priority from a healthcare perspective, but has been a high priority for years, is a landing zone in the community that we can, that you can land a helicopter here, have great access to day or night. And so that was another piece. You can see right there in the middle of that, the round circle will be a helicopter, a landing zone, so we can land helicopters there, either getting people out of the woods or getting people out of the community if they need to go somewhere. So again, that landing zone was another priority that we've continued to hear, was not part of the priorities of the healthcare, but definitely a priority from the community. So that will be there. If you go to the bottom of the picture there, that bigger orange building, that's Mosaic's rendition, a placement of a memory care unit. They're talking about anywhere from twenty-four to forty-eight beds. They've done the research on that. So they want to add memory care to this, to this campus. And they want to start that in the next six to twelve months as well. So there's going to be a lot of construction going on on that campus. If you go to the right of that, that small little building there, to the right of it, is an independent housing. It's a triplex. They believe that, again, getting a little bit more, another three units in there for independent housing would take them from twenty units to twenty-three units, again, expanding services. Then if you go up top to the right of where our primary care clinic will be, they want to add another phase of assisted living there as well. And remember, this campus, Wiley Creek was the first phase of a multi-phase approach. Unfortunately, as a healthcare, you know, the hospital did it. They started it, and unfortunately, they just never had the resources to move it forward. And from Samaritan's perspective, it was something we wanted to continue to provide, was never a core competency of ours. So again, at this time, we believe that we've got great partners from the community, the council, and now an owner that will come in and run this facility and do the next couple of phases of it to really make it a sustainable practice out there for, not only for Mosaic, but for the community as well. Our old clinic, that's about ten thousand square feet, and we're going to keep that clinic. So we'll bookend the community with Samaritan. And we're going to go from ten thousand square feet in this community to twenty-five thousand square feet. Some of the things that'll work very nicely in this, in this space will be physical therapy. We'll maintain physical therapy in here. We'll remodel it and make sure that it works well for that. And then any other services that don't necessarily fit into a primary care, urgent care building, we'll go into this building if we need people to come out for a space perspective. And one other thing I might add, in the primary care clinic, the new clinic we're going to build, we're going to have telemedicine there now. So we'll be able to, instead of driving a doctor out here or driving twenty patients back to, into either Lebanon or Corvallis or Albany, we'll be able to see those folks through telemedicine. The pandemic that we've been managing through has afforded us the luxury. Maybe one of the good things that have come out of it is the ability for our system to be paid for telemedicine visits. No one wanted to pay for those. There was no impetus to do it. Now that that's happening, we do believe that we can set up a more robust telemedicine clinic in Sweet Home so that some of the specialists that can actually do telemedicine will be able to do it, and the patients in this community will not have to travel far to get it done. So in this clinic, we'll be able to put and house physical therapy, occupational therapy, and then any other services that might not fit into that building. So we're putting in a hundred and fifty percent more square footage in Sweet Home in the next year and a half. So we'll be able to provide services that we haven't even thought of yet that might come out to this, this community, and we'll have two places to be able to take care of them. When we look at the timeframe, again, we're estimating that we're in design right now. We've got an architect. The architect is already starting to talk to the stakeholders. Again, we anticipate sometime around July we'll break ground. And then we'll go through the construction phase sometime early to mid 2023. We'll have a new clinic up and running. And then we'll go backwards and start to remodel and refurbish our old clinic and get that up to speed so that, again, we have the ability to provide services into the future. And then finally, again, what will come out of this, we hope in the next three to five years, memory care and expanded services for seniors, urgent care, physical therapy, rehab services in our old building, and then more providers, telemedicine, health, and behavioral health. So I believe we've checked the boxes for all of your, all of the priorities that the council and community have said they would like. And Brandy?
Hey there. Good evening. I just wanted to speak briefly about how this project fits into kind of our overall goals for all of our five foundations. So we're really exciting to announce that later this fall, we'll be really launching what we're calling this Building Together campaign. So it's really a comprehensive fundraising campaign. The first time kind of all five of our communities, all five of our foundations have identified priority projects. And we're really excited to partner with our community members and donors to help meet that mission of building healthier communities together. So we actually have a very bold goal, but we're excited and optimistic that we can raise thirty-five million dollars in these five communities over five years. So just wanted to give you a preview that this project is actually the first project, the first initiative of what is a much larger kind of comprehensive vision to support our community. And I wanted to share that we'll have several projects, and I'll preview them in the next slide, but they're really organized among these themes, per se. And what we're excited about is that the community identified these themes for us. Actually, the last year and a half, we took a lot of time to meet with donors. We sent out surveys. We did community forums. And these were common themes heard across our five communities. So example for Sweet Home, of course, improving access, the accessibility, affordability of healthcare, building community through working in partnerships, inspiring hope by providing some long-term solutions to our health and well-being needs. And then that leave a legacy, really that sustainable piece to make sure that we're providing for our communities over the long term. And so just, this is, again, just a very high-level preview, but each of our five communities, each of our five foundations have identified what kind of priority projects for those next five years. So highlighting the Eastland County projects, again, underneath the Lebanon Community Hospital Foundation, where I'm the director, we're launching with Sweet Home. We're also committed to continuing to raise funds for our Drug and Alcohol Treatment Center, the Stars Building. We are excited to, the next year, to have a pretty large expansion and remodel of our birth center at the hospital in Lebanon. And we're committed certainly to continuing to providing our most in-need patients. And also the scholarship program, we offer five scholarships here locally for Eastland County students to be able to pursue careers in medicine. So these are kind of highlights of what we'll be working on in the next five years. And I would love to conclude with Milt, who is serving as our co-chair of the fundraising aspect of our project.
Good evening, everybody. Again, for record, my name's Milt Moran. I'm the president at Cascade.
I'm the president at Cascade Timber Consulting across the street. And I'm also on the Lebanon Hospital Board, working with Marty. And then I'm currently the Chair of the Samaritan Health System Board, the place that I ever thought a dirt forester'd end up being a, uh, Chair for. But anyway, uh, so I, I chair along with Miriam Swanson, uh, editor of the New Era, co-editor, and her and I are both, uh, co-chairs. And as you can see, we have esteemed group, uh, folks here, Chief Dave Behringer. And, you know, when we first started this process, you all right there, Dave? Uh, it was, uh, it was, you know, brought to our attention, uh, listening to folks when we had the folks from, the, the students from the, the DO School over in Lebanon, uh, learning that people were using Sweet Home Ambulance and Fire Department as their healthcare. You know, and, and it, and I heard that it was a burden for folks to, to go to Lebanon. You know, I don't, we don't even think, I don't think twice about driving to another state or, but some folks, it's really tough for them to get out of town. So we, we felt like this was something that was, uh, needed, a need to be addressed. And, and, and I've, I've spoke with the mayor before, the mayor, he wanted a, uh, ER here. And, you know, that's just, that's impossible with, with the systems, the way they are, with laws and stuff. We can't build a ER that close. But I, I'm calling this project, uh, uh, a Urgent Care on Steroids. And that's, that's what, that's what we want to see here. You know, I, I'm in the timber business, you know, we, we're, we're getting to be a safer and safer industry all the time, but, but we have those kinds of accidents and we really want some, but something close here in case we need that. And the helipad's really handy. You know, we have one across the street at our office that we use once in a while, but this is gonna be much, much, much better. So, uh, Bob Dalton, I'll get back to the list, so I don't forget anybody. Would, so, and Steve Haskin, uh, Dr. Horton, you know, and, and, and he's here. He, he was, uh, part of that, uh, initial survey that we did with the DO students and he chaired that. And, and I really appreciate his insight and insights moving forward that we hear what, what projects he's working on. Uh, Wendy Melcher, local realtor, you know, Melcher family. Uh, Megan O'Connor, she's one of the PAs down here. And so we're involving, uh, the, you know, in, in the plans that Marty talked about, we're involving clinicians and folks that work in these, and this, we, in these clinics, we want this to be a, um, model moving forward for Samaritan and maybe other organizations for a, for a, a clinic for, for folks, you know? And so this is gonna be, it's gonna be a place where doctors and nurses can work together and, and move about and be able to be most effective for patients. And that, I, I think that's really important. We, and if you haven't had a chance, the, the new hospital in Newport, uh, we had a meeting over there and, and to see that and to see those efficiencies build in for movement of docs and be able to, uh, cohort with each other and, and, and work as a team, that's really, really important, I think. Uh, Debbie Pauls and Marcia Philpott and, and our City Manager Ray Tyree, we're, we're the group that are working together as a fundraiser. And, um, I'm pleased to publicly announce that, uh, Cascade Timber Consulting, uh, I just wrote a check for $250,000 for this project. And, um, I challenge any other business, if they'd like to do that, that'd be great. Uh, but, uh, our company, uh, has been around, you know, we've, we've been working on a hundred year trust. It was started in 1917 and we're still moving forward. We were a big part of the, uh, the family was a big part of the building of the Lebanon Hospital back in the early 50s, uh, donated along as, as programs that, that Lebanon needed to be done to modernize our, our surgery center and our emergencies, our, our emergency room and the helipad over there. And, uh, most recently the Stars, uh, the Samaritan Treatment Recovery over in Lebanon. So, uh, we're very committed to, to, uh, take care of this community as a, as a company. And so, uh, I'm very, very pleased to be part of this committee. And as you can see, we've raised almost $620,000 to the million that we're shooting for as this committee. Uh, and we wanted to have, uh, give folks opportunity here in our community to, to donate money and get their name on, on a wall that would, that will have there, that will more, will be there forever memorializing those gifts and be able to, uh, see that with your kids and your grandkids and great-grandkids that, hey, Grandma and Grandpa or Mom and Dad, you know, helped build this brand-new building. So, uh, feel free to see me or Brandy or, and we'd be happy to, to facilitate that. So, uh, thank you very much. And I really feel good about this project as a community member, been here for 48 years, across the street, the same company. And I'm pretty tickled about what we're seeing here as we're, uh, enter, enter time. So, thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, any questions, council? Well, I'm ecstatic for, to see, uh, medical services in our community. And I think Doug and Marty are probably tired of hearing me bringing a broken record. But, um, you know, I know ER is a little bit of a, was stretched, but being on the fire department for some years and seeing the, growing the dice of how far we've had to go to take patients to Lebanon and the fact that, like Chief Behringer talked about, we, there's so many, uh, so often that we take ambulances for headaches and stubbed toes that we can take care of that right here locally and save on, on our ambulance. Cause we put a lot of tear on our ambulances and it's tough to come up with the funding to fund every ambulance. So I'm ecstatic. I'm looking forward to medical services coming to Sweet Home. Like I said before, uh, Samaritan's been a great partner of our community and I'm looking forward to continuing that partnership for our community. So thank you, gentlemen, and, Lee, for your efforts.
Thank you.
So at this time, we'll go on and move on to, uh, recognition of ver, of visitors and hearing the petitions. And we have a public comment card and, uh, I'm going to, you know, go in the order of how I've received them. And so I'd ask them to come forth, be name and address for the record and go ahead and tell us what you'd like to comment about. And please keep it to three minutes. So start off with, uh, Mr. Adams. Good evening.
Vince Adams, 809 Mountain View Road, Sweet Home. Good evening, folks. So I thought we were gonna do this a little bit different, but that's fine. So I'm gonna kind of go off of what I got in my notes here. First of all, why is a small town, are we required to use our town's already budgeted funds to build and maintain and furnish a free housing for those that don't contribute to our community and our funds? What I and every other hard-working family paying taxes is not paid for this purpose. And Salem has no business dictating, uh, to us how to spend our funds under certain circumstances. Our families pay taxes and is not paid for this purpose. Our town's funds should and need to be used for the good of the town and its citizens. Our infrastructure is in serious need of upkeep and repairs on a regular basis. And for the security of, again, our, uh, tax-paying citizens. That means our law enforcement. If you build it, they will come. And we don't want that. We all know that if you build it, you're gonna have an overflow. They're gonna come here because they can get in there and they're gonna overfill and then we're gonna have more in town that we can't handle. We do not want that and we worry about how it's gonna be managed when you get the overflow. Uh, put it outside of town on a property where it has access to town, but enough, uh, area for maybe a subsistence farm where they have to contribute somehow. In other words, if you want to get something, you need to produce something. We pay taxes, you guys provide for us with our tax money, with security and with infrastructure that needs to be kept up. This gives them an opportunity to earn their food and other supplies they need and give them some sort of dignity, not just a handout. I believe I spoke before about a, a lady that I met many years ago, uh, down in Haiti, and that was one of her things, when people coming out of the bush for medical things at the, the facility that she managed, they don't just give them a free ride. They have to supply something, whether it's chickens, a bushel of, of vegetables off their subsistence farm, services on the facility. That gives them dignity. It's not just a free handout. What's gonna happen, oh, let me go here. Uh, let's talk about ties to the community. Local family, uh, and, and relatives that live in town. They should help to be responsible for those that are choosing not to live inside the community the way we should. I know that there's a few in this community that have ties to the community in that manner, but they refuse to go to these places. They want to be on the street. Well, that's their choice, but why should I have to support them by, with my tax money to build a facility for them to live in on an on and off basis, depending on the intake and whether there's room or not? Uh, make the churches stand up and take charge instead of sending funds outside of the community, state and country. Keep the funds here and task the churches to step in and help fund this. Don't take it out of my tax money, the tax money out of my friends and neighbors and the folks that are hard-working people in this community. I don't want that. I don't want that. My tax money should be, be for his services and his staff, you guys that work for the city and taking care of our town. Not taking care of people that, that just don't want to do anything. They just want the handout. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Egner. Good evening, name and address for the record.
Robert Egner, uh, 28628 Ridgeway Road. Um, actually, he just touched on a lot of what I wanted to talk about. I guess my question is, how exactly are we going to pay for this when this new organization fails? Because I have a report that came in, um, from Salem that says that their operating costs are gonna be $91,000 a month. That's for 60 beds, for a low housing deal, just like what we're talking about doing. How are we gonna afford that? And how is this, this, this company or this, this nonprofit organization gonna pay for that? If this fails, what are we going to do? How are we going to move forward? I think that our, our chief seems to be, um, in support of this, which makes me feel a little bit better about it. But, uh, I do question, I mean, how, 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 how is he going to deal with that once, once his hands are tied? Have an answer for that?
We'll probably have some answers to that here a little bit, I mean, thank you for coming. Mr. Young. Mr. Jeff Young. Good evening, name and address for record. There you go.
Hi, I'm Jeffrey Young, live, uh, 1363 Clark Mill Road, Sweet Home. A little curious about the proposal, is where they're going to put this facility. I couldn't, one of my concerns is property, my values. I work very, very hard to do what I've done. Never owned a home before, bought one here. It's a great little community, love it, beautiful place. Interestingly enough, my payment went up $100 in three years due to taxes, but I figure that's just the way it is. Um, the fact of the proposition of where they're going to put it over there behind the Buy Mart is very concerning, cause that's right in my backyard. I figure if they're, if, if the council wants to proceed with this, because I don't know what kind of, what this is even gonna accomplish. Uh, but if this gets pushed through, one of the, one of the things in the language of this, these buildings that are getting ready to be built, is that no illegal immigrant can reside there, period. That needs to be written into the law if you guys push this through, because that is not acceptable. Those need to be for people here that need help. And I'm all for helping. I used to be boots on the ground. I used to be what I did. Down, down in, uh, down in Eugene, I was, uh, we were feet, boots on the ground trying to help people get back to life. There's a lot that don't want to. Nothing we can do about that. But the fact that you're putting it in my backyard has great concerns for me. Very great concerns, cause I know I'm not gonna call the police, period. I've worked very hard for what I have. And I've seen what these people can do. Now, there's some that want help and that's great. I'm, I'm all for helping people. They need help, they need help in this community, I'm all for it. Let's get them the help. If they have behavioral help, they have, they have medical needs. If they have, you know, if they're, if they're, if they're really struggling with the battles, I get that. I've been there. That's, that was part of my ministry. But gi, just giving it away? I got, I have some huge concerns about that. And I figured if, if the council is gonna proceed with this, you gotta patch a land sitting just west of here. If you wanna, if you wanna show off and be proud, put it right there. Buy that property and put it there. Don't put it in my backyard, because you're gonna lower my property values. And that's just not, that's just, doesn't do anybody any good. So that's all I'm saying. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm a pretty easygoing guy. I pay my taxes. I try not to cause any, you know, I work a lot of hours. I work for the post office. I'm just trying to understand why we're even doing this when we've got a lot more urgent needs that need to be done in this community. We need to help our kids. We can do better facilities in regards to making it for them, for better, just in our schools. This money could be going to that. We could be getting some more ambulances, more medical help for that. I mean, this can go up, but there's a bunch of other things we can do with this. I think that really needs to be considered. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming this evening. And last, uh, Mr. Vandeleer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, members of the audience. Uh, I'm here today just to say that, uh, the mask requirements are, are not being enforced in this community with disastrous results. And I can see just in this room, even though you have signs, uh, coming into the building and in the hallways as masks are required, yet people come here without masks. Uh, there, there's over 10,000, uh, you know, cases of coronavirus in Lynn County. I don't have a breakdown city by city, but I would guess that there's probably even a higher percentage of cases in Sweet Home than there are in other cities, but I can't give you any statistics. Anyway, if you're gonna have a sign that says masks are required, then you should enforce it. Thank you.
Thank you for coming this evening. Okay, moving on to old business, RCA Resolution Number 23 for 2021. Mr. Tyree.
Thank you. Um, so as the request for council action outlines, this is more of a housekeeping item as we kind of tie up our fiscal year. Um, we are looking for, um, we, what we're trying to do with this resolution is, uh, first align, outline the budget, um, align the budget with what the council adopted as far as purchasing a new street sweeper. Um, this budget authorization allows for that expenditure, um, that you had already approved. The second thing is related to our public transit fund. Um, as you're all aware, the, uh, Sweet Home Senior Center manages the Lynn Shuttle Program. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Oregon Department of Transportation has handed out a significant number of grants, um, for the purpose of, uh, ensuring that the buses are well-maintained, are sanitized on a regular basis, um, and installing COVID-19, um, mitigation items such as screens between drivers, providing masks, et cetera, et cetera. Um, the Lynn Shuttle Program has been able to obtain many of those grants, um, and as a result, has brought in more money than we had originally budgeted for. So in order to, um, kind of finalize the budget for the year, um, we need to, to right-size that budget, add revenue and expenditure authority, um, so that we're in compliance with, uh, what the, what the Department of Revenue has outlined for local budget law. So, um, I don't have any additional information unless you have questions for me, um, but there, most of, the, both of these adjustments are, um, are net zero adjustments. So there is something to back them, in other words. Um, we're not actually adding new expenditure here.
Okay, so council directive.
Move to approve Resolution Number 23 for 2021.
I second that.
Motion in a second. Open now for discussion. Motion on table. No discussion. Roll call, please.
Mayor Mahler?
Yes.
Council Gerson?
Yes.
Council Trask?
Yes.
Council Gorley?
Yes.
Council Coleman?
Yes.
Council Sanchez?
Yes.
Well, shit record show, six eyes, no nays, one absent approval of Resolution Number 23 for 2021. Now moving up is RCA for the homeless shelter.
Page 12 of your packet. As councils are aware, the Community Health Committee has been working very hard to try and mitigate the impacts of homelessness on our community. Part of that included a trip to Walla Walla, Washington. In research, we discovered they'd been very successful in both mitigating the impacts of homelessness on the community and aiding the homeless population transition back into society. As we've gone back and forth, the committee and the council approved staff working with the county to obtain the permission to utilize property between 22nd and 24th, just south of the railroad tracks. The county has requested that we give them an actual written proposition for this and for what the facility may look like. I wasn't comfortable putting a proposal to the county commissioners without it being viewed and approved, or at least getting permission on behalf of the council without the council's approval. So before you, we have a draft letter that I've put together. I think there's a couple of ways to do it. We're not looking for a motion. This is more by consensus this evening. If the council would just like to give me permission, if you've had a chance to read it, perhaps it's give the mayor permission to work with me to put something together so that there's at least a counselor. Perhaps there's two of you that would like to put your name on it. Perhaps it would be appropriate for Councilor Gorley to approve it because she's the chair of the Health Committee. However, the council would like to move forward. So they're, again, just looking for a kind of a written request of what we'd be looking to do, and a little bit of an explanation of what the facility is like.
Okay, just to make sure, the clarification on this discussion. This is just not an approval this evening for the homeless facility. This is just moving forward to the county commissioners for continued discussion.
The wheels of government move slowly, as we're all frustratingly aware, and this just allows us to work on an agreement for the property, to utilize the property, as the committee and the council move forward on the rules, regulations, and other items related to a facility. Apparently, Council Sanchez has her hand raised. Would like to be recognized.
Council Sanchez, go ahead.
I just have a question. Would some sort of economic impact statement be appropriate to send with this application or letter to address the commissioners if we want to use their property?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
Council Sanchez will have to speak up just a little bit. We couldn't quite hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Much better. Thank you.
Okay, sorry, I have to yell. Do you think an economic impact statement would be appropriate to send with the submission to the commissioners in request to use their property?
I think we could certainly include that we estimate we're spending about $100,000 to $120,000 a year right now. I believe that's in one of the paragraphs, in one of the drafts that's here, and that we're hoping to transition those reactive expenses into proactive expenses, I believe is what the letter says.
If I may, we just heard from a citizen saying his property was going to be impacted financially, so I think there needs to be more of an economic impact study.
I wouldn't even know how to start that.
So, Mr. Mayor, when we do economic impact studies, is there a cost associated with those?
Most generally, there is.
And can we get a ballpark figure of what those costs run?
For something like this?
Yeah.
It's going to be $50,000 to $75,000 minimum?
And the timeline to do that?
Six to eight months, minimum.
So it's going to be?
If you want a full-out impact study, those would be, I would say, $30,000 to $50,000 minimum, and again, a timeframe of six months, minimum.
And the request is only at this time to take this and give it to the county commissioners so that we can formalize a conversation with them? That's all we're asking?
Correct. So the county commissioners could be asking for the same thing. So this really falls back on the county commissioners at this point. No, there will be no, nothing from the honest, please. So anyway, that falls back on the county commissioners if they're going to request that anyways.
I think what we're looking at is, and in the documents, we saw possible that the county was wanting to bring in dump station and water for RVs and stuff at the same location, right? And some kind of conversations with that. I don't think it hurts our community in any way to move forward with a conversation, since we're having all these conversations in open meetings. And so whatever we end up with, and right now, that's six months, that's going to, is still going to cost us the original money that we're putting out to deal with the homeless now.
I agree, plus the fact that this is county commissioners' property. I think a property owner has a right to have a say on their property.
I agree.
So this does fall under the county commissioners.
So I'm good with this going forward, as far as this letter and stuff happening? Oh, good. Sorry. I'm good with this letter moving forward.
Mr. Mayor, I'm good with the letter moving forward because of the two asks that are in here, is just wanting to discuss and to develop some, or to develop some questions and conversation. I don't know if this is the appropriate time to discuss some of the other questions associated with this, because this is the, the letter is the agenda item. So we're only discussing the letter, correct? According to Robert's Rules of Orders?
That's correct. And like you say, we're going to have probably another meeting or two to discuss further questions, to get answers. This is mainly to this letter, to the county commissioners, and the county commissioners' feedback and their position regarding this.
I'm okay for moving it forward, too.
I'm fine. Council Sanchez, you fine with this letter move forward, see the commissioners' opinion?
Yes.
So you have a consensus, Mr. Towery. Send this off to the county commissioners for feedback.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to new business, RCA City Engineer Record Contract Extension.
This begins on page 73 of your council packet. I think we'll turn this over to Greg, if he can get his microphone to work. There it is.
I think we have Trish Rice remotely. Is she on? And she'll kind of take where this picks up. She's been working on the contract with our engineer of record, West Yost, who is here tonight. And I'll turn it over to Trish.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me all right?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay. Yes, so we have been working with, West Yost is our engineer of record for the last year. We've kind of thrown our whole list at them. We've got quite a few projects, capital and otherwise, planning that they've been working on for us. And they have tackled it with gusto. We've been very pleased with the team and the progress we've made on our projects. The contract that we signed last year was for an initial term of one year, and then has the option to extend it by additional three-year terms. So we would like council permission to do that. West Yost has updated their annual fee schedule, which is in the packet for your review. And if this is approved, then we don't need to sign a new contract. We just send a letter to West Yost confirming our intent to extend the contract. Are there any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. So if this is a three-year contract, does the 2021 schedule stay in place for three years, or will rates be increased each year? It doesn't say in the contract.
I believe the rates would be adjusted each year. Greg, do you know if there's any other understanding?
I think as right now, we would adopt these rates based on that contract, but I guess we could always renegotiate at any time based off needs. So Ray, any thoughts?
Might be a good question to ask the engineers.
Might have to come forward, name and address for record. Good evening.
Since I'm going to be up here next.
Yeah, we got the next word.
Good evening. Preston Van Meter, 12272 Southwest Alta Lane, Wilsonville, 97070. Typically, we raise our rates annually to cover cost of living expenses, ranges from, usually it's typically around 3%. Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions, gentlemen, real quick?
Mr. Mayor, I asked Greg today, in the transition, we were not where we needed to be, apparently, with the steps that we were trying to get done. And so you guys are taking that over, I'm assuming.
Well, we've got a couple things. We're going to give you an update after this on all projects. And so they have been working over the last year on several different projects. We intend to give them a few more once we redo this contract. So we can talk about those maybe then, a little more specifically. Which project that you're asking, the question of the wastewater project, or?
Yes. I think that was the one that was the biggest major one we had that we were behind on, apparently.
Yeah, we're going to, I'll give you a full update on that. We're kind of, we were hoping we were at 90%. We're a little behind. And I know we've had discussions internally with council on that, and we will, I'll give you a full update on that.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
See, this was a council directive.
Mr. Mayor, if I could. Again, this is a, the contract is, was originally, basically, you get, we test drive them for a year. If we're happy, we get to extend it for three years. The contract is written. The contract has been signed. The contract has been approved by the council already. For this, it's really just, we want to make sure council doesn't have any issues against us.
To just comment only?
Yeah, so this is, if someone's like-
It was ruled up as RCA, that's why.
Yeah, yeah. So the type of action is marked as other. So we're just, we're looking to make sure council has no apprehension on moving forward with West Yost. Staff would like to continue our relationship with West Yost. So unless you have an objection to that, then we would just continue to move forward with West Yost.
Well, that said, just I'll open it up for any additional questions.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to hear it from Director Springman. These things are going well. You believe that they were doing adequate work?
Yeah, absolutely. We wouldn't re-entered into this, into a three-year. If you remember the original contract prior to West Yost coming on a year, was again, a one-year contract with a three-year extension opportunity. We did not extend that with that engineering firm. And then we brought on West Yost, so.
I remember that transition, so I appreciate that. But I also know that we've, from what I've seen, from my perspective, they've provided good service to the community.
Absolutely. And you're going to hear a lot more work that's being done in the next presentation. We're going to go through everything, and we've been clicking on all cylinders, and we've got a lot of stuff done, so.
Thank you. I figured that was the case.
Mr. Mayor, so after the three-year thing, are we going to be done with the wastewater plant possibly by that time? Possibly.
Close. It'll be close.
2024 or something like that?
That's correct.
And then, I guess I'll assume, and I hate to do that, that we'll probably carry you on beyond that time to do the other projects that you were going to give you, is that-
If we still like each other, yes. We're hoping that's the case.
We're still exchanging Christmas cards.
Sure.
I'm okay with this.
Mr. Mayor, I'm okay with extending the contract term.
Okay.
I'll second that.
This was apparently not really an RCA, but if we got a consensus, we'll move forward. Thank you. Next up is the Information Only Public Works Capital Improvement Plan Project Update.
Yeah, so basically, you've got, we have a ton of work going on that we're trying to get through and get to, which requires engineering. And so I asked Director Springman and Preston to just kind of give you an update on where all of that work is. And I've got to tell you, in my time, I've not seen an organization our size tackle the number of projects we're attempting to tackle, nor have I heard of anybody trying to tackle the number of projects that we're attempting to tackle. Part of me questions our sanity for this, but I know Greg's working really hard, and his staff is working really hard, Trish. And so we wanted to just give you an update on where all of this lies. Some of it's been kind of up in the air just a little bit timeline-wise, waiting for some studies and whatnot. So we just wanted to give you a, give you an update on where all that is. So I'll turn it over to Director Springman, and I think he and Preston are going to maybe tag-team this a little bit.
I think we'll have Trish in on it a little bit. So, thank you, guys. This was something that we would want to bring back periodically. We've got a lot of work going on. Some are moving pretty quick. Some are lagging a little bit. We want to give you an update on where we're at on everything that we're working. All right, just worked a minute ago. Okay. So tonight on the agenda, if you look, we're going to be talking about, you wanted some information on the emergency generator, so we'll be talking about that tonight. We'll be talking about our water master plan. We'll be talking about our stormwater master plan that's getting ready to get kicked off. Some of the projects that we have at the water treatment plant, the backwash of VFD project that was carried over from last fiscal year. We have current stream monitors replacements, that's in the works, vacuum recirculating upgrades, media replacement within our trains. And also, we have a fluoride system replacement, which has failed, and we'll kind of talk about that a little bit. We're also going to talk about the American Water Infrastructure Act real briefly, of where we're at with that project. We're going to give you an update on the wastewater treatment plant project, which lots happened in the last couple of months. We're also giving you the update on the street overlay project, water meter modernization, and then also Sankey Park. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Preston, let him get started. We'll talk about the generator real quick.
So a couple of months ago, there was, Greg had relayed some questions from council regarding cost for the generator project that was discussed at the water treatment plant. So we, I believe, working with our electrical subconsultant, had come up with a budget in the million-dollar range. So thought we'd provide a couple of examples, recently completed projects. I've done several generators on projects I've managed of the size we're contemplating at the water plant. So the number that we had thrown out, I was comfortable with, that that's probably in the right range. And I think there, sometimes there's lots of other things involved in a generator- And I think there, um, sometimes there's lots of other things involved in a generator standby generator project, especially in water and wastewater treatment facilities. Uh, so, so we kind of have to talk through those things. So that's the goal of the next few slides. They're not my slides, I'll say this right now, because there's way too many words and I can't read. So um, I, I, I'm gonna paraphrase, and then if you have questions, feel free to ask them. But in general, um, our electrical consultant is a company called Landis Consulting. They're based in Salem. A really good uh, electrical engineering firm that we work with a lot. Uh, a couple of projects that they've done recently, very similar size. Uh, the city of McMinnville put in a couple new one-megawatt generators, which is about the size that we've calculated. You, you would probably be looking at, at the water plant based on the load, the horsepower you have at the facility. Um, so you see about eight hundred thousand dollars in costs. That was, there were some um, things in this installation that are a little simpler than some of the ancillary work we'd have to do at the, the water plant, the way the electrical components were designed. There's some additional work we have to do for the automatic transfer switch, which is the switch that, that basically flips when you lose power, it flips over to the other side and it starts up the generator. Um, there's a little bit more work to do there uh, with that and with the switchgear. So um, that's, that's one that's kind of in that range. Next one uh, was done down in Springfield for E-Web. Uh, and actually Mel Damewood, who's been working with you all on your AWEA compliance project. Um, was at, worked at E-Web when this project was done. So that's another in about the eight hundred thousand dollar range. Both the projects are a couple of years old. Those are also uh, construction costs, so they don't include the, the engineering and other costs that would get rolled into an overall project cost. So um, uh, next slide. Uh, I'm not gonna read all of that. There's just a lot of stuff involved. So, things to note about a generator. It's always more foundation work than you think it's gonna be typically on a one-megawatt generator. You'll have a four-foot deep concrete pad. That's just because of seismic anchoring requirements for a generator of that size due to the vibrations and the startup. Um, there's a lot more civil work involved than you think there would be than just taking that generator you have in the back parking lot here. Um, and just, you know, plugging it in. It's not quite um, that straightforward. And then the other consideration is really the fuel. So if you would like to have, so a lot of times in these generators, we, we use what we call a belly tank. So there's a belly tank for fuel underneath that generator that's in the parking lot. Um, sometimes if you want to have more uh, generator operating time, then you'll put a standby tank next to it. You won't be able to put in that big belly tank, which is just basically putting the tank under the generator. That increases costs. There's a pump step involved and things like that. So we haven't necessarily had those conversations at that level on, on the, the generator at the water treatment plant. Um, but those are some of the complexities that we look at in terms of the other stuff. Next slide, Greg. Uh, I, I'm sure you've heard this as you've talked about projects, but the, the transitory inflation that we've seen in the marketplace is legitimate. Um, we've seen materials costs almost double, you know, over a six-month period. And while we hope that, uh, we even hope that maybe those costs will come back down, what we're seeing is just a plateauing. They're staying high, they're not dropping um, as, as you might expect in normal supply chain uh, type shortages. So um, there is a concern that, you know, just the, the copper, it's a long run from where the generator would be installed at the treatment plant or at the water plant to where we connect the wiring. Uh, that's all copper and they're all big copper wires and copper is expensive. So when you put all that stuff together, that, that, I can, initial budgetary number, and I, I want to say it was a million to one point one million dollars or something along those lines is what Landis had come up with when we originally talked about it. That's in line with, with kind of what we've seen in other projects for, you know, public agencies. Greg, did you, I thought maybe I was. No, I'm. Uh, I, I think moving forward, you know, there, there's some recommendations in terms of how to get the best pricing. Um, it, you know, might be worthwhile waiting until the winter. Um, you know, early in a construction season, you always get better bids. We might see some softening of materials prices over uh, over the holidays and into early next year. We are seeing some slowing in the housing industry in places. Um, bend usually is the first that we see it and we're starting to see a slowing in the housing market and bend a little bit. So maybe that moves this way and that affects the economy and brings some of the prices down a little bit. We don't know. Um, uh, but we're not seeing that in the construction marketplaces yet. So um, the other thing we can do is, is we can go back and look at the complexity of the installation. If there's things we can do um, to reduce, I, you know, I don't want to say the bare minimum, but there's also things that maybe you would like to do as an invasive retrofit, because you're gonna have to go in and kind of tear out the guts of everything and then rebuild it in a lot of ways. Sometimes we can just limit the amount of work we let happen in that and just keep it to the, connect the copper wires and, and put the ATS in. Um, there is some other stuff we'll have to do, but what we would try to do during the design is to keep that extra stuff to a minimum, if, if that makes any sense. And I, I'm happy to answer any other questions that you have about that.
Counselors, any questions?
I have one. We, we, we bought a surplus outback. I'm gonna assume, I don't want to do that, I'm not gonna use that. Is there a chance that we could get another surplus one for that? I know two hundred and fifty KW is a lot. It's a lot. Uh, I don't know how we got past that when we had the outage years ago. I don't know how we got past that with the water. I don't, I don't have any idea. But I tell you, when I came into town, I was working at the coast, and I came into town, I have never seen it black in our community. I mean, nothing. You couldn't see anything. There was three places that had power. The phone company, you guys, and I don't remember the last one. Three that had power. And I don't know how we got past that. I don't know. How do we, how do we get water going? I don't know. I don't know how that worked.
Well, normally in, on the water side, you rely on, a lot on your reservoir storage to, to feed pressure into the system and usually. So, so there are lots of water treatment plants that don't have standby generators. I'm not suggesting that with the way your intake is and the treatment facility works, that, that's not, you know, it's, it's a good idea for you to have at your facility. Um, but a lot of times you have enough, uh, just supply in the system of finished water that you can get by for a twenty-four-hour period.
Yeah.
Um, with, with that storage or even sometimes longer. Um, that I suspect is how you got by.
Well, I, I would, I would like to see us try to get a surplus one if we can. If we can't, I understand that. I, you know, and we may not be able to find one. But, you know, the state will do a lot of stuff. Sometimes they give you some crazy stuff, so.
Well, the price of the generator is kind of in line where I thought it would be, five hundred thousand. The three hundred thousand install, it kind of somewhat understand it because you're the city. If it had been private sector, that would be about way less, let's put it that way. Um, but I understand that, but I wouldn't mind seeing if we can't find a surplus. I mean, I understand the costs are going up. I know the housing market like you're talking about. Building materials are gonna start go back up again like they were. So I've heard that, so. There might be an opportunity.
But hopefully, hopefully they go down. But if they go back up, we're in trouble.
If I might, uh, certainly, I think at all times, we, we peruse the, the surplus site and um, we receive, I think it's monthly, basically emails or whenever they kind of get a little overwhelmed with the stock that they have. But I can tell you that a generator of this size is going to be extremely hard to come by from a surplus standpoint. Um, this is exceptionally large, even compared to the one that we recently obtained and is in our back parking lot uh, because of the power requirement. So I think we would be hard pressed to come across one in surplus. Not saying it's impossible and certainly we'll keep our eyes out, but it, it will be extremely hard to come by a surplus one. And we'd need to make sure that it's a, a good working unit um, with, without a ton of hours on it because of the criticality of it.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, that, that is a downside of it, only from the standpoint if you might get a, we might be getting rid of it for a reason, so.
Yeah, so there are facilities that are being upgraded that may have large generators. And if, a lot of times, it's so, so having multiple generators and dealing with the switching and the paralleling of, of those generators is really complex electrically. So, you know, you'll, you'll make the decision to just buy a single larger generator and get rid of the other. So there is a chance we could reach out to some of the larger communities and we work for most of them. So, you know, we, we could, I, I think it's a low probability, but it's always worth the try. Um, I wouldn't disagree with that at all. You could also consider pre-purchasing the generator. It's a big piece of equipment. The, so, one thing to know, the generator that you would buy for the water treatment plant is on the order of double the length of that generator that, that's out there. And they're about ten foot wide, when the, just with a skin-tight enclosure on them. It is a big structure. Um, and, and a lot of iron. So um, even just the transport of those from another facility would be a significant effort. Um, the, that being said, should do everything you can uh, to, to try to reduce your costs. And there could be some options we could look at there.
Well, the one that they, in my place of employment, it came on, I don't know, maybe at least two, what, times a month automatically. Came on, you, the thing, it click and bang and it's pretty quick. It'd run for, I don't know, hour or so, two hours, I don't know what it was. It was diesel and then it automatically shut off. So you have to worry about getting the, to get diesel. I, I think that's not, won't be a problem, but I don't know what kind it's gonna be, but.
It'll be diesel and it will come on a couple of times a month.
Yeah.
Yep.
I think the battery might be dead. Okay, so I'm just too eager. Okay, good. Thank you. Sorry, I'll be, I'll see, I'll be more patient. There we go. Thank you. Uh, and we'll try to be patient as I'm being squeezed in. So let's talk about the water master plan update. Um, I think we'll just keep Preston going right now.
So we submitted a, a scope and a budget to update your water master plan. Um, that's the number that's in your budget that we worked with Brandon to put that in your budget for this year. So we have our team ready to go. In fact, we're finishing up on another water master plan for a small community up in uh, north of Portland right now, and we're planning to just move that team right over and have them start on yours as, as soon as you'd like us to. Um, that will be a comprehensive master plan that will look at the water plant. So we'll take a, a lot of what uh, Stephen already knows he needs to do with the plant, a lot of the projects that you've recommended and incorporate that into the CIP, so you have a comprehensive plan that you can adopt and, you know, where you're, that you have enough rates to cover the work that needs to be done over the next twenty years. Um, similar to uh, had some flooding challenges last winter. Um, and Greg had approached us about updating the stormwater master plan. So one of our uh, partner firms, Civil West, is, is gonna lead this effort. Uh, looking at uh, everywhere in the system, um, that you might need to upgrade coal verts or storm drains, inlets, outlets. Uh, your, your stormwater and PDS um, uh, regulations, things like that. So um, both of those will be, the goal of both of those is to be done at the end of this fiscal year. And then on the small diameter, so, so we had, e-early on, I think our first task quarter was to look at, uh, Greg had approached us about trying to understand what it would cost and, and how to go about replacing all the smaller diameter water mains. So you have a lot of two-inch galvanized steel water mains in the system. What tends to happen with steel over time is it gets corroded on the inside to where you have a really, if you've ever pulled an old steel water main out from under your house, you know, you got, you know, a quarter of an inch of actual area where your water's moving through. Um, same thing happens in a sys, you know, a system, uh, if they're in the, the regular water system. So um, we have done a, uh, taken the water system model that was developed by the former city engineering firm. Um, updated it, made some tweaks, improved it, recalibrated it, and have a plan for replacing uh, um, all of the two-inch water mains and probably even some of the other smaller water mains. You've got some porch lines that maybe could be upgraded to improve fire flows. So we've completed the analysis for that. We're waiting on a little bit of information back from Trish, which should allow us to then prepare a map that just basically lays out this ten-year plan where we take the amount of money the city wants to put into that program every year, and we just allocate it around and we just pick off projects every year. So the goal Greg has had, uh, Greg and team have had for that is that we just get on this regular process where we identify the project, we get it in design early, you get it out to bid early in the year, so you get the best price, you do the work over the summer, and you have it operational by, um, by the end of summer or early fall. Um, and the first project is Ninth Avenue, which is, uh, if you've driven, probably have driven down that road, you live here. Um, lots of spot repairs in that road. Every single joint, I think, on that pipe has a spot repair.
Or more.
So, or multiple spot repairs. So that's the first project. Um, we are incorporating the overlay into those projects. So we'll go and replace the water line and then we'll grind and overlay the street um, as, as the last step. And that first project is uh, in preliminary design right now. It should get that out to bid um, early spring, say March. We'll get good pricing and then we'll get to work.
Uh, so are, are we gonna do the laterals, too, at the same time?
Uh, that would be my plan. Uh, uh, I, I don't think we've gotten it to a level of looking at every single lateral. But I mean, typically if you replace the water main, you'd want to catch the long side and short side services as well.
My hopes is that we would do the services at the same time we do the mains. Um, I'll, I'll kind of take this for a little bit. Um, that was, that was it, right, Preston? Uh, let's talk about some of the projects that we had going or we have working at the water treatment plant. And so these are all of those. Um, we talked about the backwash and VFD updates. Um, that was a project we started last fiscal year and carried over this year. It is about ninety percent design, probably a little farther than that. Uh, we plan on bidding in December. Um, constructing in March uh, and spring. Um, the current stream monitor replacement, um, that's already been in the work with our integrator record and equipment. They're already doing walkthroughs and looking at the type of equipment that we'll be replacing. And so that, that should be completed by the end of this fiscal year. Um, vacuum recirculating upgrades. We have three filters. Um, we were estimating that it was gonna be a hundred thousand dollars per, per filter. We got one estimate back at two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. We don't know if that was just a complete redo, Hail Mary, we don't have time to work, but there's not a lot of people that do this. So it kind of shocked me, but then I guess after thinking about it, it didn't. So we are gonna potentially, we're backing up on this and want to try to do this in-house. We have some new maintenance staff. Um, we also have a new mechanic um, who seems to think that he wants to try to get his head around this. And so we're gonna probably give him an opportunity to do that and I, and, and he's been successful in a lot of areas already, and so we'll give him that opportunity. Um, especially if he can save us hundreds of thousands of dollars. I would love to do as much as I can repair in-house. Um, the media replacement, um, we did get one quote in early and to do one tank, I believe it's just a little over ten thousand dollars. Um, which we bid for and that work's gonna begin. We're gonna have a contractor do that work, but we're also learning as we're watching that contractor. Um, the plan is to let them do the one, we will assist, and the plan is that we will follow up with the next few trains ourself. Uh, the media is already purchased from last budget year and is on-site. Uh, was that all of those? Hold on, please hold.
Oh, you missed.
Yeah, I got one more. It, it, I don't know how it dropped off. No, it's not on there. Is it? Yeah, I think the batteries are dying on this. Oh, there it is. Okay, sorry about that. Okay, Florida, uh, fluoride system, we budgeted uh, eighty-six thousand dollars for that this year. I kind of want to bring this back for discussion before we spin that. And the, the reason being is it's not required by city ordinance. We had this discussion prior to me getting here and all the staff. And maybe it's as easy as we talk about it, we just want to keep adding it in and move forward. But it's not mandated by, by Oregon Health Authority, and we do this for health reasons. And, and it costs a lot of money for the capital. And so I just want to ensure that you guys understand what we're doing and how we're doing it. And we've done that through city ordinance. So I just want to kind of bring that back to have one more discussion before we move forward. Um, AWEA, I'm gonna let Preston take that one. Let my glasses unfog.
So the uh, American Water Infrastructure Act compliance, AWEA for short, um, is a two-step process. You all saw your uh, risk and resilience assessment. It was completed last June. We just kicked off the second phase, which is the ERP or the Emergency Response Plan. We'll have that done in December, right before Christmas. Um, and you will be in compliance with uh, with the act and you get to redo it in five years. Um, so um, that's really all the update. There, there is uh, the potential for some CIP elements in the Emergency Response Plan, depending on what we find. Uh, kind of building on the, the risk and resilience assessment and, and how as an emergency response you would respond to that assessment and some of the things that were identified. We don't yet know what those will be, but if there are, we'll obviously bring that back with Greg and, and to council for, for discussion at the right time. It could be examples like SCADA controls and things like that, that we need to protect our system. And so those are types of things that would come out of that when we talk about the things that occurred in the past in Florida and other things. So this, this, this is required for us to do that and make sure that we're whole that way.
All right, wastewater treatment plant. Um, and I know um, our staff has kept you guys up to speed on what's going on with the wastewater treatment plant. Um, in the end of July, uh, city staff terminated the contract with Murray Smith for convenience. Um, I don't know how much I can elaborate or go down that road, right? Um, we are currently ready to go with our engineer record. We have some subs that are willing to help up and step up. Where you're probably going to have to back up a little bit to ensure that some of the design is where it needs to be. I have ensured my city manager that as we move forward, that we are going to be looking at ways to kind of control some of the costs, not without functionality. Especially if we have to spend a little bit more on design and backup. But I, I, I believe that we're going to have a good project. I still think it's a sound project. And I won't go into much detail on that as of right now, but we're ready to go and we're excited to go. The team's ready to go. Maybe I'll let, I think our timetable may come back a little bit different in, in the way of maybe phasing the project. We have some acres on that property that are undeveloped and where we could potentially start some work without kind of getting into the plant yet, while we're still finishing design. So there's still a lot of things that we're working on and we will be coming back and giving you a more detailed update. But that's where we're at, we're ready to go with our engineer record. I'm kind of excited about it, if you know the history. And we're, like I said, we're, we're ready to get our boots back on the ground and pick this project up. Streets overlay project. We've got phase one done. Again, this was ODOT exchange funds. Phase two contract and RFP came to you guys. It was approved. That pre-work is going to start next week with Knife River with an estimation of that work being completed in October. So we're looking forward to that and having this, our, our streets projects done for this year. And we did meet kind of very on the very edge, but we'd make the summer hours and we're able to get our projects done that way. We have a water meterization, water meter modernization project, and I'm going to let Brandon kind of jump on this one a little bit. It's going good and I'll turn it over to Mr. Nish.
So we, with council approval, move forward with purchasing our new water meters that we will install around town. Based on supply available on hand, we are receiving about 50% of those meters. The first installment, we'll call it, in October. We're going to do our best to replace some of those larger meters first, that was more of what they had on hand. We will also be beginning on kind of that west end of town and work our way east. There's a lot of reasons for that, including working with our current vendor who does our existing meter readings to try to keep costs as low as possible. So starting on the west end and I will work our way east as we go through this project. We're hoping that first batch will be in the ground and operational by the end of November. The second batch of meters is scheduled to be shipped in March, once they have all of the components they need for that. And again, we'll, we'll finish off the rest of town at that point with a scheduled completion date for this project at the end of March 2022, before the, long before the fiscal year is out.
Good question on that. When you start the meters, are you going to let the public know in advance? That are going out saying, by the way?
We can put together something that can go out in some of the, the next utility bills. We usually provide some sort of mailer. So we'll be sure to put in a flyer or something that discusses the.
What we're doing.
Yeah, we'll talk about the project and it's.
The meter replacement, I don't think it's going to require like digging up meter boxes, is it? It's just literally already in the box, so we shouldn't be disturbing.
It literally takes them five, 10 minutes.
Yeah.
I, I do know that some of the older homes, just for FYI, that a meter was replaced and the people in their homes had a lot of crap came into their house and they didn't know about it and they, they were all suddenly in the panic on what the heck.
Oh, gotcha.
So I'm just.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
That's usually when we do a service, when we replace somebody's service and we give them that fresh flow of, it really then starts pushing stuff in their system into their screens and everything. And we really create havoc when we put a new service line in, especially on an old system.
Just throwing that out there.
Yeah, yeah, we're aware of it. We, we, when we do shut offs and do new services, we, we actually have a letter that's already created and we hand them out in advance, so.
I know that this, our city staff might get overwhelmed real quick, real fast if you want to. What's the thought?
And Brendan, you're all good?
Yeah, unless council has any questions, I don't, I don't have anything else for this project. It's moving on nicely. We appreciate the, the support and I think this will be good for the community and the, the customers.
Well, I'll, I'll leave this with the rosy side of our projects. Sankey Park, if you saw the pads asphalt were poured or actually laid last Friday, we have just a little bit of concrete work left and a few lights on the back that are still backordered. And we have benches, we're starting to put them in around the playground, if you haven't noticed. We're almost done, just a few things left to button up that lower area and that project will be done and it looks amazing. After that, any questions? I know I threw a lot at you.
Any questions, councillors?
I'd just like to comment on the Sankey thing. It's, it's, if you, if people are listening and are saying that, you need to go see it because it's a drastic change and, and, and that's, Public Works have really done a really, really good job there, really, really good job.
Well, I think there's some others. I think you've got Park and Tree Committee, it starts with you on that committee. I think Angela Clegg, you've got Joe Graybill, you've got Dominic in Public Works. And I think everybody is really taking a piece of it and that's, and that's what shows.
Well, it really isn't a mess for me, but the, we, we gave, we gave you guys a plan that we wanted to have taken care of and you guys have done it.
Yep.
I'm not talking just about Sankey, I'm talking about everything in town. It's gone, it's gone pretty well. It's pretty, pretty good. So, and that's because of the, the, the stuff you guys have done. There's no other way to put it, it's just that simple. So I appreciate it, I like being on the park fleet and they've done a really good job, really good job.
Thank you.
Council Sanchez, do you have anything you want to add or questions? Okay. Moving on, request for council action resolution 24, number 24 for 2021, a resolution does make the city equipment for surplus and authorizes loss of disposal.
Page 244 of your packet. And we'll turn this over to Brandon as well.
Hello again. So we had a new director start recently, I'm sure you're all aware of who she is. But she decided to go through the back room at a particular building and found many items that were sitting on a shelf and she wants to get rid of them, primarily because they serve no useful purpose any longer. And they've been sitting there collecting a significant amount of dust. So with that said, you have before you a request to surplus some equipment that belongs to the city as part of its fixed assets program. If you will remember, our current fixed asset threshold is $5,000. These items you listed here are certainly less than 5,000, but that is because at one time $250 was that threshold. So we're doing our best to go through those items that we no longer need and get them off our books. It makes our auditors happy, it makes me happy, and it will make Megan happy as they get out of her storeroom. So we've got a multitude of computers on here, it looks like three, several printers and a couple of receipt printers all with asset tags and I'll need your approval before we politely place them where they should go. Some items we will auction off only because there might be some useful value as far as dollars that we can obtain from that. Primarily the printers and the receipt printers, we might find somebody who wants to keep those. We don't typically try to keep computers because of the sensitive data on them, and so we do destroy them and recycle the, the components. So you'll notice the three computers are listed as disposal, the other items we will plan to auction.
Mr. Mayor.
Council directive.
If I, I got a question. So Brandon, is auctioning that stuff off worth it? What's the, you have to put into it and you have to do, I know where the money should go, it should go where it came from.
Sure, I, I would, I would, I would argue that it does take a lot of time. And it takes a whole, because we have to provide public notice to a local newspaper in order to, to do that, per, per city ordinance. We all, city code, whatever it is. We also, and then have to track that process. It is, it is time consuming, but our, our code is pretty specific about how we do this. The only reason, like I said, that we dispose of computers is due to sensitive data and the ability for somebody to potentially try to recover that data. And so from a, from a cybersecurity standpoint, we do go ahead and get rid of that stuff. The rest of the items per city code, we have to auction. Yeah, you know, we, we have a good auction process, it could use a little bit of refining and maybe somebody who isn't running it, that is me. But it, it, it works.
Okay.
Council directive.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 24 for 2021.
I'll second that.
I have motion in a second. At this time, any questions regarding or comments? Okay, we'll move to roll call, please.
Mayor Mahler?
Yes.
Council Gerson?
Yes.
Council Tross?
Yes.
Council Gorley?
Yes.
Council Coleman?
Yes.
Council Sanchez?
Yes.
Yeah.
The record show six ayes, no nays, one absent approval of it. Now moving on to second reading of ordinance bills, ordinance number seven, 2021, council directive.
So Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve application ZMA 21 dash zero three as presented and conduct the second reading of ordinance number seven for 2021.
I'll second that.
Motion second, open for discussion. Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Mahler?
Yes.
Council Gerson?
Yes.
Council Tross?
Yes.
Council Gorley?
Yes.
Council Coleman?
Yes.
Council Sanchez?
Yes.
Yeah.
The record show we have six ayes and no nays, one approval, moving forward for reading this evening by title only.
Ordinance Bill number seven for 2021, ordinance number, an ordinance amending the official zoning map.
Okay. Now council directive to move forward for third reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, first and second, any questions? Okay, we'll move forward for third and final reading on October 12th council meeting by title only. I'm moving forward, reports committees, any reports from any of the committees, chairs. Moving on to reports to city officials, mayor's report. The Harvest Festival, do we have a, an idea, we need more help on that? Or am I still on Mr. Towery's thunder?
No, I, I would turn over to Blair.
To be honest, I'm not, I'm not entirely sure. I, my guess, and Legia, you might know, my guess is we could still, we could always use additional help. And so we, we encourage anyone and everyone to, to sign up through the city website to, to help out with the Harvest Festival. It'll be a great time.
Mr. Mayor, I, I, I'd encourage you all to come. Maybe not just, maybe not to help possibly, but just to be there and show your, your, that you want to be there. And it's, it is a pretty cool thing. It's, it's going to be way bigger than it was last year, let's put it that way. COVID kind of goofed that up a little bit. But I think you'll be, I think you'll be pleased if you, just drop in for a while and let people know you're there. So I'm, I'm going to go and I'm going to help, so I'd appreciate any help you guys can give us.
Mr. Mayor, if I might?
Yeah.
I know that there's, if you're looking for an opportunity and, and still want to be able to participate then after, there's a really cool group of people that are organizing the parking for this event. Who can really use some help as far as volunteers. We have a new parking plan for this year and I know that, that those, that those people working on it are really cool and really fun and want your help. So it would also release you to participate in the event by, I don't know, 10 o'clock-ish. So it's a great opportunity.
Mr. Mayor, do they hire somebody from out of town?
One might say yes.
You, you notice he did, he said we, we were going to meet at 6:30 in the morning. He didn't say anything about how early.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, along those lines, I believe we're over 80 vendors? Yeah, so the vendor area is going to be exceptionally large. And they all want to come in and set up all at the same time. So personally, I would love for somebody to show up and just record Brandon and Greg as they deal with people trying to set up their vendor spots all at the same time. So we can all watch it later with some popcorn.
It's a great idea.
Sounds good. Anything you want to add on the city manager's report?
Yes, as you're aware, you received a, a copy of my response to Oregon OSHA regarding a, a complaint that people were not wearing masks at the city council meeting. I have to say, the, the enforcement agent for OSHA was very understanding. I explained the process that we go through. We mitigated and agreed that so as my responsibility as the city manager is to protect our staff. And so they've requested, and as you can see, all staff is now wearing these wonderful KN95 masks. But I, I will say that the gentleman from, from the office in Eugene was about as pleasant as you're going to find from an enforcement agency when they call you with bad news. So staff continues to engage with Project Falcon multiple times each week, which is good news for us. We have the International City County Manager Association Conference coming up next week. Both Blair and I will be attending. I'll actually be out Friday. I'm volunteering to help put the conference on in a couple of different capacities. Blair's staying for the Harvest Festival and will join me Saturday night or Sunday morning, yeah. I'd like to thank the council for your time a couple, a couple of weekends ago. Was it a weekend ago, two, a weekend and a half ago? It's all a blur. And, and appreciate you taking the time to do the additional training. I'd like to review just a couple of things with you about that. One is trusting the system. Two is understanding that conflict is healthy since we all view the world through different frames. And diversity of thought is good, but it must follow the rules of engagement. And one of those things we talked about is no surprises. There must be commitment to the cause, disagree and then commit to the decision. Must be accountable to each other and to our constituents. Results matter, keep focused on the goals and reaching our goals. And as we discussed, keeping your spokes green and doing the things we need to do to keep our spokes green. So appreciate everything that you've done and what you did. We've got some other information that we'll put out for you too, that you requested. One of those things we talked about was a admin finance property meeting. So we'll be working to put that together so we can, and it's time, we're supposed to review them every two years anyway, but we'll go over the council rules and, and some additions, subtractions, whatever. I had to make them out of that, so that's all I have.
Department of Directors reports, anybody got questions, directors, or directors would like to bring anything up?
Mr. Mayor, if I might? I had one request from a councillor regarding checks for CH2M related to the maintenance of our plants, also known as Jacobs. The checks that, that we cut recently were the final checks for our time with them. Yes, a little bit delayed. I think that as we wrapped things up and, and got everything situated and got the final dollar numbers, we finally received those invoices. So we did just pay those in the month of August and that was our, the end of our relationship in that manner, at least for now.
City attorney, anything? Council business, good order, anything?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to comment on the, the, the time we had at, in our work session. I was, I was pretty happy the way things turned out. I just, I, I really wish that the rest of the staff would have had to come, you know, and, and, and see what we actually do, you know, instead of just sitting around watching football. You know, I think that was wrong. So the next time, I think that we should probably make sure that they are mandated to go. At least, at least for Saturday all day. So if we could talk about that when our next meeting is, you know.
Well, at least for the cookie debate.
Yes, 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 yes. Well, I apologize for not bringing the cookies today, I totally forgot. They will be here next time, so just letting you know ahead of time. That's, we'll figure out what that is sooner or later. I, I really did, I, it was, it was pretty productive, I think it was. I, I really did, I, it was, it was pretty productive, I think it was pretty good.
I thought so too.
Mr. Mayor.
You go ahead.
The art will be accepted next week and we'll have a soft opening on the 15th.
Very good. On further, we will go ahead and adjourn at 8:21.